What about countering the temptation, ready to be in our country, you want us to call the road?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Payne?
Yeah.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bybee?
Here.
Ms. Ellis?
Yeah.
Mr. Worthy?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Yeah.
Mr. Knox?
Here.
Ms. Thornton?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the silent meditation and the pleasure of allegiance. Let me say this before I go into silent meditation, in your silent meditation this evening, I will ask you to remember Dr. Scarlett Don, principal of Overpool Elementary. She recently lost her son, so let's do remember, and I'm going to silent. Thank you. Thank you very much. So here. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition, she is the board's, I'm going to stand deep.
Good evening, Mr. President, Superintendent, and members of the board. Tonight, I have the privilege of honoring many outstanding individuals in the Clark County School District. Honorings, as I call them, please come to the podium, accept your certificate, and shake the board member's hands. For the past several years, the Georgia Radon Program has participated in the National Radon Poster Contest. This contest is open to children ages nine through fourteen and allows them to create and design a poster encouraging people to test their homes for radon. Radon is the second leading cause of lung cancer from tobacco usage. This year, Clark Middle School's Charlotte Moser took first place in the state and will be moving on to the national round. She's unable to attend, and I see this lady, the advisor. She is in the orchestra concert tonight. Next up is Clark Central High School's journalism students. They attended a culture to the Georgia Spolastic Press Association Ball Conference in early November. We would like to congratulate the following individual award winners for their efforts in creating the 2017 Ilia Literary Art Magazine, which was rated as the All-Georgia Literary Magazine, Best of the Best 2016-17. Delia Adamson. Mara Vasta. Brady Hare. Violet Barrett. And Zoe Peterson. And their advisor, Nathan Braxell. Finally, we have a special presentation for Project Safe coordinators tonight. We would like to highlight the efforts of the Fowler Drive First Responder Team earlier this month. Some of you may have heard that we had a very serious situation at Fowler Drive Elementary School when a second grader collapsed in the playground. The school's First Responder Team performed CPR and administered the A and E machine prior to emergency personnel arriving on the scene. The student was immediately life flighted to Atlanta for further care. Join me in welcoming Richard Langfield to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President, Superintendent, and board members. I get the opportunity on occasion to really love my job, and tonight's one of those nights, and I get to really love my job. But Project Safe stands for sudden cardiac arrest awareness submission for prevention and education. Because of the support of the board and the superintendent, Clark County has school nurses in all of their schools. And what they do is they make sure that their school is prepared for sudden cardiac arrest or cardiac emergency. They had to put that team in place on November 30th. And what I'd like to do is recognize the people who participated in that. And if I would ask Principal Johnson to come up and help me with some of the names, because she's very aware of these individuals. But the first one goes to, you know, without the support of the principal, these things would go to place. And one of the things that we do as a Project Safe Heart Safe School, which Clark County, all Clark County schools are recognized as, is that we ask you to do a practice drill. And I'm sure when the school nurse came to her and said, "Can we do a practice drill?", I'm sure their first thought was, "Great, another practice drill, we get to do another practice drill." But with that, I'd like to honor you. The second person I'd like to recognize is Amy Roach. She's a lead nurse for Clark County, and I'd just like to recognize her for her support and letting us. And then, in no particular order, we're going to recognize the first responders. Tazee Abo. The unique thing that Clark County did from when I asked for the names of the individuals. So what did she do? She's a teacher escorted other second grade students off the playground into the building in order to attend to her students' needs. And so I'd like to, this is the first time I really got to see what they did during the response. The second person is Quincy Wilkins. A great teacher that supported Court Suneo was contacting the office for assistance as he collapsed. Richard Whitworth. Richard is a science literacy teacher who served as an alternate for CPR and used it at eighteens. And this is Jennifer Miller, and I just got to tell you, I was at a recent conference, for instance, Emergency Colorevescure Care Update, and when I got this email, I just had to meet a Jennifer. So Jennifer is a secretary bookkeeper who ran from her vehicle, because she was on her way to be recruited for an additional job to administer CPRs. So Jennifer, please. Christina Navarro is a receptionist and makes all of the calls to 911, parents, grandparents, and district employees. And Coach Molly O'Neill. Miss Sessin called into the office for the first responder team, such a crucial part to give the team role. And Polly Shenton, a teacher and first responder who also administered CPR. And Donna Spangler. She's a kindergarten teacher who also administered CPR and gave the A and E. Stephanie Toh is a gifted specialist and waited at the top of Fowler Drive directing emergency vehicles onto the campus. Huge, huge credit. Melissa Solomon, she's a media specialist and directed traffic from the handbooks department. Received, and she also received items from the front office during the handoff. And Janella Bloom, who is a paraprofessional, retrieved items from the front office, including the heavy pen and A and E handoffs. Mia Jordan, she's the first responder who transported the A and E and heavy things to the field. And Carla Funseca, she's a secretary bookkeeper who is oriented to be secretary and bookkeeper who made contact with all their employees and principals. Stacy Carson, Assistant Principal, facilitated coordination of events and gave student information and accommodated the student for the hospital. And Sarah Olert, the school nurse. And I'd like to also recognize the person that they did CPR on and got the A and E. And that's Ace is here tonight with us. We spent the last couple of days at Oakdale, where he has a heart surgery, which is a condition that calls it a dirty across. So Ace is here in the heart.
That was truly a team effort to cover everything, and we applaud that. Mr. Worthy, I believe you have a presentation?
Yes, and please forgive my seat, I have a pension area. If I stand, you may see me fall to the floor, maybe you'll be administered a second. But yes, I was asked, on behalf of the Board of Education, to present this to some special people that also acted quickly in a situation at Fowler Drive. First person is Nurse Sarah Olert, I think she could do it better. And then we have Coach Holly Shenton. And we have Ms. Donna Spangler. Thank you very much. Dr. Means?
That moves us, Mr. Worthy, that moves us into information items, and the first up is our Citizen Committee, Co-Reside Committee, this is the last, most of your course. I don't know if we have, if we don't have one, then we'll... We also have the SPLOS Forward Report and early Head Start Policy Committee, committee minutes. So that's all material that's in your packet, that's in your review. That moves us into the recognition of visitors tonight, sir.
Okay, before we do that, do we have any amendments to the agenda? Ian Nurd, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Don, about Mr. Payne, got a second on that?
Second on that. Davis?
Oh, wait.
Okay, recognition of messages, if we do have some visitors this evening, I need to read a short script before you speak. Speakers will be limited to three time minutes, and that will be reflected on the screen. At this point, logs must be concluded, no speaker should know personal attacks while speaking. All comments are to be addressed directly to the Board of Education. Protect the privacy of our students, speakers should refrain from identifying specific students by name. Personal concerns may be addressed in writing to the Superintendent and President of the Board of Education. Our first speaker this evening is Shandra Caldwell, Policy GBN.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Shandra Caldwell, and I'm a teacher at Runnable Elementary School. Good evening, my name is Shandra Caldwell, I'm a teacher at Runnable Elementary School, and I am the co-president of Clark County Social Educators. And I'm here this evening to express concerns that I have about the policy stated in the CCSD Board Brief number nine, as the GBN Professional Personnel Evaluation, also known as the GBN Professional Personnel Termination. This policy refutes what it states. For example, in one part of the policy, the board states that it is their intention to provide all due process protection. But in the right of application section, it states that no employee of Clark County School District is entitled to any of the protection afforded under the Fair Dismissed Act. According to a source, no rights by implication is a legal catch-all phrase defined to eliminate due process rights that are not stated expressly in the written policy, hence implied rights. Meaning if a right procedure is not expressly stated in the written policy language, then there will not be any implied rights by reading between the lines of rights by implication. So if it is your intent to provide all due process protection, this phrase demonstrates a very different intention. The intention completely allows you to re-insure the fact. This policy also clearly illustrates that there are no protections without an apparent falsely accuses the education misconduct, a student decides to get either, or an administrator has a personal conflict with the educator. I ask that you vote to table this policy and revise it to include all protections afforded under the Fair Dismissed Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Our next speaker for this evening is Jesse Evans, Due Process for Termination slash Non-Read No.
Good evening. Jesse, I'm the chief of government, so this is your show. I just was informed recently by CCA, GAA, and the community about this policy. And honestly, I think that the intent, what our intent is there, right, to afford teachers due process rights. I've been told that the charter over now under reals, a lot of those rights, and not all of those rights. And in a perfect world, we wouldn't need due process rights. Like, I give people positions of power would use that power in ways that are fully informed. They would use their power to make informed, legitimate decisions and just decisions. Decisions that are guided by integrity, decisions that are empathetic, that respect the dignity in that involve people involved or affected. But, we don't live in a perfect world. Our founders, founders in this country, give that, they chose to legislate due process rights for us and the rights, protect us from people who might abuse their power. And honestly, I don't think this is necessarily about people who have evil intent. I think that a lot of times, for me as a teacher, there's a huge disconnect, oftentimes between what happens in the building and what people are aware of happens in the building, right, like board level, like district level. And normally, we don't see people at the district level, we don't have interactions with people at the district level, usually. But the people who do have interaction with people at the district level, what we do are people in power over us. And not all people who are teachers use it in ways that are for the benefit of our students and for the benefit of our community. So, I think, again, I'm really thankful for the policy committee wanting to do this. I really, really, really would make sure, like, I hope that, and I think that this board wants to get it right. And I really hope that we, that we would decide to just kick it back to committee for another one, or just to make sure that the language says what, you know, does what was intended. And that's not what happened today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Our next speaker is Corina Gallagher, Policies.
Hi, my name is Corina Gallagher, and I am a parent and a current concern on a local school that I'm missing. So, while there are many issues that I would love to address, I just want to focus on the one that I've been fighting for nine years that's pre-cate through big grade, and that is parent visitation. And I just pulled some information from the district's website, and I'm going to read it as it is and not as if it were up to my discretion, which is what a brief, a recent conversation, what a principal was told, that the policies and regulations are up to their discretion. So, the first one came from your 2016-17 Title I Plan for Family Engagement in Education. It says, "Family engagement means participation of parents in regular two-way and meaningful communication involving students, academic learning, and other school activities, including ensuring", and I'm just going to do my favorite too. "That parents are encouraged to be actively involved in the child's education at school. That parents are full partners in the child's education and included as appropriate in decision-making and advisory committees to assist in the education of their children." Also, on that same document, under number six, under letter C, it says, "Clark County School District will, with the assistance of the schools and parents, train teachers, pupil services personnel, principals, and other staff in how to communicate with and work with parents as equals partners by providing professional learning, family engagement for teachers and administrators, and address topics such as communicating with parents." And the last thing that I pulled is a regulation, and this is under visitors to school. And I'm just going to do my favorite too. The second one says, "Parents and other community members are encouraged to visit schools and are welcome to visit during regular school hours. The visit, however, must be, must not be detrimental to the school's instructional program. The principal or his or her designated shall have the discretion to determine if a visit interferes with the instructional program or school's functioning and may ask the visitor to leave. That's only if it interferes with instruction." And the last one, "All visitors are expected to state the purpose of their visit prior to or upon arrival." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Our last speaker for this evening, Brent Andrews, Policy GBN.
Hello, Brent Andrews, most who know me. I'm a teacher at Cedar Shoville, seventeen years of experience. And I'm concerned about the revision of the Policy GBN, and ask that the policy go back to Policy Committee for further consideration. I trust that the school board has the best interests of both students and teachers in mind. And I heard that this policy revision was intended to simplify, reduce the size and language of the original policy. I in no way believe that the school board intentionally set out to rewrite policy in order to harm teachers, but I'm in fear that this policy could result in a loss of protections under the Fair Dismissed Act. I'm disturbed that the state seems to encourage districts to ignore the provisions of the Fair Dismissed Act. But I'm glad to know that the school board has discussed the importance of maintaining, at least, fairness in procedures. I am worried, however, that the revision contains the following revision. Except that specifically set forth herein, no employee of Clark County School District is entitled to any of the protections or procedures afforded under the Fair Dismissed Act. Underneath the statement, everything seems to be crossed out. It appears that in another place, the word procedures is kept, but the word protections is removed. How valuable are procedures without protections? Here in Jim Crow, there were procedures in place for black people to vote, but there were no protections. A person of color could act on his right to vote, and according to legal procedures, be given a literacy task of reciting entire documents, such as the Declaration of Independence, without missing a single word. In the end, though, even though there were little procedures for voting, without protections, the result was the same as having no right to vote at all. CCSD has come a long way in the last two years in honoring and valuing a teacher voice. We cannot move backwards. There have been many periods of time in my career at Cedar and in the district when the relationship between teachers and both building and district leadership was absolutely toxic. Although leadership has power to silence and intimidate teachers, this game is a lose-lose situation for all, including our students. Who knows how policies and practices affect students better than teachers? And when teachers feel devalued, their performance drops, and many eventually flee the district. We don't need to be figuring out ways to terminate tenured teachers, we need to figure out how to retain them. One way of doing so is to treat us like the professionals we are, listen to our ideas, and ensure that principled employees are not terminated for political reasons unrelated to one's teaching ability. I, and I quote from the description in the board brief, "The district retains the authority to continue affording some or all of the substantive and procedural protections of the Fair Dismissed Act as a matter of local policy." So I ask that the school board include all substantive and procedural protections in its local policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews, and thank all of the speakers for your attendance this evening. And at this point, we're going to go ahead and move to Jennifer and Dr. Means, I thank you now.
Mr. Chairman, may I just ask one question? I just want to say I appreciate the comments from many tonight. And if we do not have copies of them, so would like to request those be given to the district and be disseminated to the board members.
Yeah, they will, Dr. Means.
Thank you.
Yes, we are down to I and E, Dr. Means?
Yes, sir. First, the first report is GSBA. Do we have any reports?
As you know, we had a meeting last week in Atlanta at the Waverly Hotel, and it was a good meeting. One of the things that I wanted to find was the fact that, that, that participated, students participated in our meeting, and they spoke very well from various school districts throughout the state. And we have initiated this some two years ago, and it's very productive, and let young people express themselves, and you get a chance to listen to students from all over the state of Georgia. And I thank you very much. It was well attended, we had the outstanding speaker, the speaker on Saturday morning was from a fairytale school in Miami, Florida, one of the largest school districts there. And this gentleman, he explained to us how he came to that district that failed it, and it had moved to a number one in the state now, that's in Miami, Florida. And it encouraged all that was present, that if you put the effort in and the time and energy, you can change, you can turn the school district around. energy, you can change, you can turn the school district around, because this was done in Miami, Florida. It was an outstanding conference.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Government Relations Committee, any reports?
Another report, our meeting is going to be, I'm sorry. Our meeting is going to be on December the nineteenth, and we will be having our delegation to come. We've met with the superintendent with some proposed platform for 2018. We invite everyone to come and be a part of what we would like to, our delegates to work with us on in 2018. Greg, you have any more?
Yeah, I just want to, it's going to be at four thirty, as we already said, on the nineteenth, and the delegation is going to be our two state senators and three House representative members that represent Clark County.
Thank you, both. Finance Committee.
No, I wouldn't say that. We had a finance meeting on this afternoon prior to this board meeting, and financially, I think, was stable.
Thank you, sir. Policy Committee.
Thank you. So, we will address the GBN comments and the GBN discussion on the agenda. I don't know, I might think I'm not going to talk about it, but, uh, Policy's been busy. On Saturday, this board met from eight AM to two thirty or so on Saturday, as our ongoing discussions and revisions of our board operations policies, which are found in BNC. And this coming Monday, here at four thirty, we, four, four thirty, four, sorry. At four o'clock, we will have a Policy Committee meeting that will follow up on the discussion that took place on Saturday. And that's where we'll take the time to make some revisions to our board operations that have been crafted in conjunction with board participation, Dr. Means and some of his prior experience as a superintendent of ten years in another district, and Dr. Allsberry's experience working with boards across the nation. And then, in January, our regularly scheduled meeting is when we will resume the policy discussions.
Thank you. Mr. Payne, Property Committee, any reports, sir?
We have a problem, we have a problem.
Mr. Payne reported that we have not sold any property, and we have not purchased any property, and so we're okay.
They're okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Dr. Means, Secretary of Defense, report.
Thank you. I only have a few items to share. I think the celebration of the Staff Dollar Drive, reviving ACE was something that I wanted to share. Glad that the entire board and community was able to now meet ACE, but more importantly, the staff that really jumped in and acted right away and literally saved his life. And so, I want to just thank that staff for their time. Wanted to inform the board and the community that one of the issues that I've talked to you about is safety in our schools, and so to that end, just wanted to remind you, I haven't told you that we have engaged in a security, we're going to engage in a security audit. The name of the firm is Safe Havens, they're based out of Georgia. Safe Havens will be in this school district in the month of February to examine not only the physical, physical makeup of our campuses, but also procedures and policies that we have to be sharp about in regards to safety issues. It's, it's an uncomfortable topic to discuss, but we're not vigilant about the security of our children, and we're, we're not, we're not being diligent. And so, Mr. Michael Dorn is a former police chief of Bev County, and has done this work internationally, and we're really pleased to have him here. And then, I guess the last thing I would share with the board is that our final day of instruction is on Tuesday, December nineteenth. I'm just reminding the board because it's my understanding that historically, the district normally ends its instructional week on Friday, it would have been on Friday, but this is a unique calendar, and so we go into next week by two days. So, just wanted to now remind the board, but our, all of our parents and citizens watching them, we do still have two days of instruction on Monday, Tuesday, this week.
Thank you, Dr. Means, and, who did you have?
Adam G.
Yes, sir. Moving on to policy discussion, the first policy, and the only policy we have for public review for the next four weeks is policy JCDAE, and that's weapons. Deals with weapons.
Okay, that's policy JDAE, and it's policy that'll go out for four weeks of review. I need to have a motion, second on that.
So?
Got a move by Mr. Payne, got a second from you, Miss Davis?
I just scratched my eyes.
Second from Miss Davis, okay, all right. Now, any questions about this policy before it goes out, if I need any questions? Thank you very much. Sure, right hand, please?
All in favor?
All in favor. Maybe, Mr. Davis? Davis, okay, motion passed, and we're going out for review. Okay, action items.
Action items. First item is amendments to previous meetings, or sessions numbered for second, and the regular meeting numbered for ninth.
Okay, you have an opportunity to review the amendments of those two meetings, I need a motion.
I move with the announcement.
Okay, move by Mr. Payne, got a second from this, thought, any questions about these amendments? Any questions? All in favor? Okay, motion passed.
Thank you. The financial report from October twenty seventeen.
Right, Mr. Payne, you have an opportunity to review the facts, I need a motion for approval. Move by Miss Davis, got a second on that. Second by Mr. Piper, any questions about the financial rule? Any questions?
I will later come in, I'll, I'd accept, this is time, I will provide some comments to the finance committee for consideration in your experience. And I'll be telling this as I move on the financial.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? All in favor, for approval? Is that it?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Okay.
Next item is policies to be adopted. There are two policies and one regulation.
Okay.
The first policy is policy GCI, Classified Personnel Evaluation.
Regulation, policy, GBN.
The second policy is GBN, Professional Personnel Evaluation, there's a regulation that goes along with GBN.
Okay, yes, but we've had much discussion on policy GBN, I mean, as Ed has actually called, are you, are you going to approve this policy tonight, send it back to the Policy Committee?
Well, I think it's up to the discretion of the full board, and not just my discretion, obviously, but I, it would be my recommendation as policy chair, with both public comment as well as just independent phone calls and stuff that some of us have received, that it's not good work to move this policy forward. We need to pull it back to Policy Committee and take into account the comments. I appreciate Ms. Williams asking for written copies of some of the comments so that we can, we can incorporate those changes. It is our hope, and Dr. Myers and I tried to clarify this before, but it's our hope that it'll be on our January agenda meeting, because our December meeting was called specifically to deal with our meeting on Saturday. And so, our hope would be that it'll be on the January meeting to take place, January...
Four.
The, I'm sorry, the policy meeting. Will be at four o'clock on January nineteenth. On January twenty second, and that's our open meeting, so we do welcome you to come and sit and listen to the discussion, and feel free to email any suggestions to any board members. But yes, I do believe we need to pull it back. I appreciated the comments tonight, and I appreciate Mr. Evans' comments, too. It was not the intent of the board to take away the deprocess of teachers, and I think that there is certainly some confusion in the charter, and then the charter district, and so we need to get clarity on that and make sure that it is a policy that fully reflects our intent. And so, we will be furthering that discussion. It would be my recommendation to pull GBN back to Policy Committee meeting, and so maybe vote separately on GCI and GBN tonight, if that's willful.
Okay, what I'll do, I'm going to call for two motions tonight. The first motion, I'm going to call for the policy, Dr. GCI, okay? I need a motion on that. Move by Miss Davis. Got a second on you, second from this, thought, any questions about this policy? That's policy GCI, Classified Personnel Evaluation.
And there were no comments, written comments, and we were saying that those were...
No, and, and, and any, okay? All in favor, Dr. Davis' policy, sure, right hand, please. Thank you very much. Now, for policy GBN and the regulation, I need a motion to send this policy back to Policy Committee, as Ms. Edison's finished speaking, okay? Go back to Payne, second by Miss Davis, all in favor. Call for a question. Thank you. Okay?
And, yeah, and I did, again, as a member of the Policy Committee, I want to reiterate that that was not our intent, so I think it's, you know, Sarah said it very helpfully, but I just want to state it again, it was not our intent.
And we're thankful for the process to have the four weeks of where the policies are placed, help the public comment, again, to hear from the people who are affected by the policies, because we aren't. And so, it's good to hear from you, so please, don't ever stop letting us know your feedback, and so we'll take it back and quickly come up with a requirement that fully reflects the intent and is in the best interest of the district.
And I also do want to recognize GAE for, that was the first organization to contact me.
Thank you. Okay, now, before we move the agenda, I'm looking at items four through fourteen. Now, obviously, we didn't have a work session in this month, this is the only meeting that we had, and I have gone through these items, four through fourteen, third, hopefully you've done the same thing, and I was just wondering whether you would just agree, just because we're really, seven of them, or most of them, maybe all of them, we've talked about them before, but I was just wondering whether we would just, with three items, four through fourteen, as we consider agenda, you could go on at the same time.
I make that as a motion, Mr. Piper.
Move by Mr. Payne, got a second by Miss Davis, any questions?
Can I ask a question about Robert's rules? Should we have amended the agenda back?
Yeah, we amended the, no, we didn't amend the agenda, Dr. Davis.
I know, but should we have amended it to do that back on item C?
Yeah, yeah. How do we handle this now? Motion passed.
Sorry.
Okay, I have a question.
But this is going to be real fast.
There's a total of eight field trips, and I just, I do want to take some time to thank our assistant principals who put together the reports on our field trips. Our students have a lot of opportunities to go on out of state and overnight field trips, so there's a total of eight field trips that you review. They're all outstanding opportunities, and I want to thank the assistant principals, but moreover, as you can see with the detail, we have a lot of staff who give up their personal time to take our kids on these education opportunities, so I would be remiss if I didn't also recognize that, for, for going above and beyond eight trips total.
Right, my recommendation, the assistant attendants on item four, I need a motion on that. Move by Dr. Knox, we have a second on that. Second by Mr. Greg Davis, any questions about item four? All in favor, sure, right hand, please.
The next item is approved Mars Systems Training Agreement for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen years for principals, local school leadership teams, and James Bartman will be working with members of the advisory team of the local school governance council.
And we have presentation, J.J. Harris, his staff on that agreement.
They, they were at the last board meeting, showing how smart systems have been used in their school already.
Okay, need another motion? I have a fact, by Miss Davis, I have a second from Miss Williams. Any questions about item five? Any questions about item five? All in favor? Motion passed.
The next item is approved intergovernmental agreement with Athens Housing. Just thought there's a transportation issue.
Okay, item six, need a motion. Move by Miss Davis, second by Mr. Piper, any questions about item six? Intergovernmental, okay. Yes, this minute. Any further questions? All in favor, provided six? Seven.
Approve contract, or construction contract for coil and DHL for, as part of the SPOSH five, or twenty seventeen SPOSH budget.
Item seven, so move. Right, Mr. Payne, got a second on that. Second by this, thought, questions, move right on seven. Go ahead. That's it. Yes. Any further questions? Go ahead, Miss Davis.
We had a, we had a discussion, I think, for Dr. Means, came here, I think I'm wrong, but talking about working with these contractors on apprenticeships for our students. Is that, is that something, is that something that's continued, or, you know, I know that the legality of that is also up in question, but I just seen that there's any discussion that's taken place that Dr. Means could be aware of.
So, that, that conversation must have happened prior to my arrival, but we will follow through, Mr. Davis, I think it has a lot of sense, so.
Yes.
Yes, we will follow up. It's a great opportunity for him to do.
So, voting on this doesn't, wouldn't jeopardize that at all, right, sir?
No, sir. Okay, any further questions on item seven? All in favor? Eight.
Approved furniture purchase for coil and DHL.
Need another motion on, eight. So move. Right, Mr. Payne, got a second on that? Thank you, Mr. Piper, second by Mr. Piper, okay, any questions about item eight? Okay? All in favor? Nine.
Nine is approved the projector purchase for DHL coil and...
Need a motion on nine. Right, Mr. Piper, second from my left over here. Go ahead, call for two. Okay, second for, Ms. Ellis, okay. Any questions on item nine? Any question? All in favor? Ten.
I think this is an opportunity for us to thank not only Mr. Perry Hamon, his shop, but Veronica Jackson does outstanding job with RFP process, and so, the information and data that you have in front of you is due to that good work.
Going to number ten is approved purchase of data cable for DHL middle WR coil middle.
That's it. All right, that's on item ten, need a motion on that? Move by Mr. Stewart, got a second on that? Second by Mr. Davis, any questions about item ten? Any questions? All in favor? Eleven.
Thank you, sir. Eleven is Head Start, early Head Start Annual Eligibility, Recruitment Selection and Engagement and Attendance Plan and Selection Criteria is an annual review of that process that the board must review and then eventually pass.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson, eleven on Head Start. Right, Mr. Payne, second by Miss Davis. Questions? Questions, all in favor?
We did not plan this at all, it turns out it's a nice agenda item, but, the next agenda item is budget amendment for the nursing salaries, it's a budget. If there's any agenda item that, that has real life evidence of its value and worth, I think we saw it earlier this evening.
Nice, go ahead. Item twelve, need a, the motion on item twelve. Right, Mr. Piper, got a second on that? Second by... Second by Dr. Knox. Questions? Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Motion passed. Right there. Thirteen.
Uh, the next item is to approve Clark County School District Financial Irritation Contract Renewal with the Office of Behavioral Health Prevention.
Item thirteen. Need a motion on that?
Still move.
Move by Mr. Payne. Got a second on that? Second by Ms. Davis. Any questions on, uh, item, uh, thirteen? All in favor? Motion passed.
Fourteen. Thank you, sir.
You're exciting, Ms. Davis. You're exciting.
Uh, set date and time of January work session in regular board meeting.
All right, and you had the recommendation from the superintendent, date, time, right time, we do six o'clock work session and also regular meeting.
And that's the second, so the work, the work session will be Thursday, January 4th, and the regular board meeting will be Thursday, January 1st, as per both times starting at 16:00.
Need a motion on that?
Still move.
Move by Mr. Payne. Second by Ms. Bybee. Any questions? Any questions? All in favor? Thank you.
All right. The next item is, um, outstanding work that has been done by this board and I'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Davis, uh, but there is a resolution that the board would like to discuss. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, sir. Um, it was brought to our attention that, uh, we had some activity in the county that impacted, uh, two of our schools. And I thought my recent activity, and this was parents who, um, found themselves in the process of deportation. And so, what, um, Mr. Bybee and I, uh, board member Bybee and I were able to do was to, uh, with the help of, uh, Dr. Means, we visited the two schools in question, um, you know, talked to the staff and, um, from that we, we composed a resolution to speak about it and there are copies of it on the table. I wanted to kind of share with folks the kinds of information that we gained through going to the two schools. The impact that import, that deportation or the threat of deportation has among our student population can be tremendous. And, um, I wanted to kind of take this time, I know the board, board has copies of this, but I did want to take the time to share with you and the public what we learned in terms of the impact. One that, one thing that, uh, Dr. Means talked about is field trips. Well, a lot of our, um, Hispanic families or Hispanic children don't take field trips according to the schools because they don't know what they're gonna find when they come back the following day. Um, we also were, were told how, uh, the climate of fear leaves the neighborhood and comes to the school with the, with the students. And it's not just the students that were immediately affected. It's, it, there are students who are afraid they're gonna be affected. I had an opportunity to talk to, today, to the, um, uh, police officer for our, um, police department, who is, who's the spokesman. And I asked him, I said, what do you think he's, uh, he's Hispanic? And I asked him, what does he think the, the population of, we have around 25 students who are Latino? And what does he think of that, of our student population? I have one or more parents who are undocumented. And I said, is it half? He said, no, it's more than half. So, this is a big impact in this community, um, and, um, many of these people, in fact, most of them have been here, um, for a long time and, and they're, and the students that we teach are American citizens. Um, we also, uh, what we also learned was that, um, parents who are, uh, fearful of being on the roads don't come to the schools. And, and yet we found and through research that involving students and, I mean, parents and the education of students is very worthwhile. And so, there's a barrier right there. So, it's not just a language barrier, it's actually not even coming to the schools. We also were told, um, that the staff spend a lot of their time, you know, when, when the occasion arises diverted from other things to deal with the overflow of, um, when there's a, a parent that is, that is arrested and threatened for deportation. We were also told, um, that children often miss school because one parent is, is having to take the family out because they need to go to Atlanta or something to, to fight for the, um, right of the other parent to be in school, I mean, to be in our community. Um, so, these are, these are some of the issues that were, uh, told to us by, by school administration and staff. And it's, uh, you know, it's something that I think this, this community, um, given our reputation as a very welcoming community, given the fact that, um, we are really intent, this board is intent, and this community is intent on educating all children so that we have a very successful community. And we've got, we've got our challenges, but this is one challenge that is by design. It's not just an individual decision. This is a, um, much broader thing than that. And I think as this, um, I believe that this resolution represents where this board is at on this issue. And again, there are copies in the back. Thank you, sir.
Executive session.
Okay, uh, one, can I just make one comment before we break for executive session? I wanna, I think I read correctly, I think, too. I think that, I think that Dr. Means is planning to be rolling rid of Saturday.
Uh, tomorrow, sir.
Tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. ...
I, I just, I, I do want to compliment and, and Dr. Means, he was, he was at another event on Saturday after the workshop. I, I wanna compliment Dr. Means probably about how visible he is out in the community and how accessible he is. I mean, he has, um, achieved way beyond my expectations of a superintendent, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The purpose of the, uh, executive session is for the evaluation, just for clarity in front of the board.
I need a motion. Okay, move by Ms. Davis. Second by Ms. Payne. All in favor?
Thank you.